This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to call to order the regular September 7th, 2021 council meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda? If not, would anyone like to make a motion to accept the agenda as written tonight?
I'll move to accept the agenda as written.
Thank you, Councilor Webb. Is there a second?
I will second it.
Thank you, Councilor Norman. Would you call the roll, please, Stephanie?
Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Counselor Allen?
Aye.
Counselor Webb?
Aye.
Counselor Norman?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Stephanie. Are there any presentations tonight? Okay. I don't have, I do not have a mayor's report tonight. Nothing to report on. Any council committee meeting reports? The, I just got word that the senior board meeting on Friday has been canceled. And so I won't have anything to report from the seniors for a month or so. Any topics from the floor tonight? Okay. Consent agenda for acceptance, library board meeting minutes for June 20, 21? Bye, Counselor Webb.
Yeah, I had one question. It was under number seven in their minutes, the patron computer policy. Did, did that come in front of us?
I want to say it came in front of council like two years ago.
But this was in their meeting minutes.
Oh, I thought you meant the current one. What I didn't
The June 2nd meeting, item number seven was a patron computer policy. And they didn't show the motion, but then on item nine, it says a recommendation to city council, patron computer policy.
I have not seen that, but I will reach out to the committee.
Okay. With that, Mr. Mayor, I I would move to accept the consent agenda for acceptance.
Motion's been so moved to accept the library board meetings of June 20, 21. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Counselor Allen. Would you call the roll, please, Stephanie?
Counselor Norman?
Aye.
Counselor Webb?
Aye.
Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Counselor Allen?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Stephanie. Consent agenda for approval, city council meeting minutes for August 16th, 2021. Any discussion or questions on those meeting minutes? Anyone like to move to approve the meeting minutes for August 16th?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Motion's been made to accept the meeting minutes for August 16th, 2021. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Councilor Norman. Call the roll again, please, Stephanie.
Counselor Allen?
Aye.
Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Counselor Norman?
Aye.
Counselor Webb?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Stephanie. Is there any unfinished business tonight? No unfinished business with that. We'll move right into new business. Planning Commission application, Cherie Ash. Be found on page eight or application. Hi, Cherie. Welcome. You're, you're on mute.
Hello.
Good evening, Cherie.
So this application is being brought forward per the recommendation of the planning commission for appointment.
Okay, has everyone looked over the application?
So I don't know if Josette, do you want to take the lead?
Yeah, so unfortunately have a vacancy in the council. If Ms. Ash was willing to throw her name in the hat again, potentially, you guys need to have a discussion of who's from the original set of interested parties for council positions. You would want to have a discussion about that. So I don't want you to pre, first of all, Cheriece, are you interested in being on council anymore, or would you like to go to planning commission?
I'm still interested to be on council, yes.
So then I would propose you don't appoint her to planning commission until you guys have that discussion and follow-up interviews or something with the three, if they're all still interested candidates. But I don't know what council thinks of that. I just if she's still interested in being on city council and you still have two other applicants we need to get, whether they're interested, and then you guys need to have a follow-up.
Counselor Webb?
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up, Josette, because I had the similar, similar thoughts. Wasn't sure if we really wanted to go through the process of appointing her tonight and then turn around and potentially take her back off of the planning commission if, if we were to select her for city council, so. I would be in favor of delaying the appointment tonight.
Any other counselors have any discussion on this? Want to talk about this? I don't really want to get into the process moving forward of electing a new seat, but we can just keep the discussion to the application tonight for Cherie for planning commission.
I would move forward with the people that applied to interview them again. It would speed the process up and make it get filled sooner, was my personal opinion.
Counselor Allen, do you have any thing to say about this?
I really don't feel like discussing it tonight, to tell you the truth.
But are you guys, is there a majority of council that's in favor of tabling this application until you have a follow-up meeting about appointing a new council person?
I'm in favor of that.
I would table for 30 days.
Sounds good to me. Thank you.
Okay, and I also feel that needs to be tabled, so.
So staff will look into the availability of the three candidates that remained, and if their interest is still there. And then council can set up a, whatever process they're wanting to do to fill the position.
Okay.
Thank you, Cheriece, for coming tonight.
Yeah.
Happy to be here.
Thank you for stepping up to try to be on the planning commission, Cheriece.
Absolutely. Thank you.
We are, Cheriece, we are still having a work session on Thursday with the planning commission, if you would like to attend.
Okay.
Thank you. Are there any business from the departments tonight? Okay, moving right into ordinances and resolutions. We do have a resolution tonight. Resolution 2021-18. A resolution initiating withdrawal of territory from the city of Vernonia. It can be found on page nine through 13.
Cherie probably didn't think we were going to be ready for so soon.
Hi, can you hear me? This is Carrie Brennicky.
We can hear you.
Okay. The whole team here is frozen on my screen, but if you can hear me, it works. Being mayor and counselors, I'm Carrie Brennicky with MIG, taking over from Matt Straight as the city planner for Vernonia. What you have before you tonight is a resolution to withdraw territory from the city of Vernonia. It's from an applicant named Daryl Dixon. Mr. Dixon owns two properties next to each other, adjacent to Vernonia Lake and on the Nahalen River. One is in the city and one is in the county. Both properties are very constrained by the setbacks in the Nahalen River for the floodplain and natural resources. And then also with the side setbacks for each of his properties, it is basically making both of, both of his properties unbuildable. And he would like to build a fishing accommodation. So the solution, they have, Mr. Dixon is proposing is to de-annex his Vernonia property back into Columbia County. And then once in the county, he can do a lot line adjustment or a lot consolidation and be able to build on his lot. So with withdrawing territory has very specific process in the Oregon revised statutes. The first step is to adopt a resolution of intent by the city council. And that's what's before you tonight. So this is the resolution, and this will start the process. It will set a public hearing date no more than 30 days from the date of the resolution. And for this one, since we're having the adoption on the 7th, if you do so adopt it, the public hearing is scheduled for September 20th. So we've already noticed it to get out. So after that the public hearing, the council can listen to the testimony and decide if they want to ask staff to prepare an order. You prepare an order and ask us to prepare the ordinance to withdraw the territory from the city. So that is the process for de-annexing. I believe many of you have been through it before with the properties for the UGB swap. If you have any questions, let me know, and happy to finally meet, talk to you.
Thank you, Carrie. How, how do you pronounce your last name?
Brennicky.
Brennicky, okay, thank you. I saw it in the office the other day, and I, I should have introduced myself, but nice to meet you. Any questions for Ms. Brennicky? Mrs. Brennicky? Would anyone, oh, go ahead, Counselor Webb.
Well, I just wanted to, I mean, this was brought up to us before, Mr. Dixon, and and this was the council's direction was to go ahead and de-annex. So I'll make the motion if you, if you want, Mr. Mayor. The city council has determined that it may be in the public's interest to withdraw the territory, de-annex the property identified in the staff report. As such, the city council initiates the de-annexation process on the property through adoption of resolution 2021-18 and sets the matter for a public hearing on September 20th, 2021.
Still moved. Thank you, Counselor Webb. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Counselor Allen. Would you call the roll, please, Stephanie?
Counselor Allen?
Aye.
Counselor Norman?
Aye.
Counselor Webb?
Aye.
Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Stephanie. Any correspondence tonight? No correspondence. City administrator report.
Okay, so sorry for the late arrival of my city administrators' report to your email. We had an employee come down with COVID, so I was over the hill running around getting rapid tests so I could make sure my other employees could keep working for me, so. Um, our report, the projects are moving along as scheduled for the Travel Oregon Grant. The mural festival seemed to have gone over very well. And there's still two murals that are left to be finished, one on the Dwyer Theater and one on the Dewey pool side of Rock Creek, the Rock Creek Building. And then we just received the final items to finish the different projects. So the drip lines came in, the paper reset and the final planting and placing of the remaining new garbage receptacles. So our goal is still to be completed with all these items by October 2nd. That's when Travel Oregon representatives are going to be coming to kind of tour the improvement. Murals, garbage cans, drip lines, hanging baskets, trip hazards dealt with, electrification of all the like, also not exactly sure how I'm going to show them some of it, but plug something into a light pole, I guess. The American Rescue Plan Act, we received the first installment of two installments. And we thought we were getting 460. We're actually getting 506 from the ARPA fund, so you guys have a work session scheduled for September 13th to go over a couple of presentations from products that staff's looking to get for the city, and then a list of different items you guys had us kind of researching the legitimacy of, and some items that staff's going to bring forward that we already kind of discussed with you guys. So that'll be on the 13th. The Clutzen Sewer Project, I'm still waiting for an available skidder driver with a, to move the logs. So if anyone knows of one that's out there and needs work, tell them to call me or her to call me. Because the ones I have contacted are real busy, so we're kind of stalled at moving the logs. They're not close enough for a self-loading log truck to move them. So we're going to have to have someone with a piece of equipment in there. And then it kind of benefits us because they can pop or loosen and remove some, a couple stumps that we believe are in the project area. The Lakeview Sewer and Weed Avenue Stormwater Manholes, I know that was a big discussion. They arrived. They got delivered finally, so we don't have to figure out a low boy and all the pickups that would come with that. So we're still shy of a full public works crew. We still have one, two of them out, so we're not going to schedule the work until we have a full crew back. Just for safety and other needs with the city's work going on. And but once we do, once the full crew's back, then we're on the contractor's schedule to hopefully in the next couple of weeks get moving on those. The next one I wanted to talk to you guys about is vandalism at Spencer Park. So vandalism is happening almost daily there. We've had the removal of the nets and washers from the picnic shelter, broken picnic tables, bathroom fixtures, some people tells rolls in the toilet, squirting chocolate syrup over the entire inside of one of the bathrooms, toilets, walls, partitions, everything. Garbage is being left out everywhere. So staff's planning on posting an announcement about the vandalism, along with just the pictures of the damage and asking local parents if they, their children are frequenting Spencer Park to have a discussion with them about keeping the parks in nice condition so that all may enjoy. And if we can't kind of get the community to rally around, we're probably going to close the bathrooms. Because it's like today, one of the picnic table benches, it's like kids kind of got together and jumped on it, broke it into pieces, and then stuck it in the toilet. It's the weirdest thing. I don't know if someone has like a bone to pick with Tim because he's cleaning up all that stuff, or he burped at him one time or something. I don't really know what the other options are. I mean, we talked about cameras in the, using the ARPA money for cameras, but that's not going to fix the short term. So I, if someone else had a better idea, but really we're just, we can't continue to just leave the property vulnerable and just keep fixing stuff. I mean, they're pulling the paper towel dispensers off the wall. They're, it's just, it's just little young kids doing nefarious acts. So I don't really know what the solution is, other than kind of putting it out there so hopefully parents would talk to their kids and say, hey, you're going down to Spencer Park. If this is happening, you want to be far away from it, or you want to tell me who is doing it. Some sort of kind of bigger, everyone looking at a bigger picture. So, because Tim's going to have a heart attack if I keep making him go down there and cleaning up after kids and putting things back together and all of that. I still, I think Five Star just super slammed. They still haven't scheduled my one-year walk-through for the Rose Avenue Senior Center building. We have been making some fixes. We did get the absolute marble and granite to come in and measure the backsplash area. That was one area that the seniors were having a hard time with in the design. There was some, something missed because, and I think it has to do with them being ADA countertops, but the, the back of the gas range is way too close to the wall. But it's because they're shower countertops to be ADA accessible. They can't be like a full deep countertop like you put in a standard. They're a little more access, and so there isn't the gap that should be in the, the FRP, the plastic has kind of wilted or melted for better, lack of better return. And so we need to replace that with some sort of stone that won't transfer heat to the wall behind it. And so absolute marble came and did that. Counselor Webb turned me on to a decibel app to check the decibels. And what I'm planning on doing is having a representative from both the food bank and the senior center there to do the initial testing with me. So everybody has a player on the table, and we write down what the decibels are when they, the two kick on, one kicks on, then when two kick on for the walk-ins to see how really loud that is and whether the acoustic paneling is going to solve that, or we're going to have to do something more than what we have planned. So we're doing some fixes there. We had one tumbler in the office door for the senior center side fail, so they kept getting locked out of the office. So Davis Lock and Key came out and fixed that. So I think eventually, but hopefully by, you know, Thanksgiving, all of their problems will be solved. And they'll be a happy tenant in the building. That's the goal, anyway. And we, the SDA money is there in discussions with council. We had talked about waiting until the Weed Avenue Stormwater Project had had time to kind of settle, so we weren't paving over something that wasn't totally compacted. And so potentially, we're probably going to wait till spring to pave with the public works director's knee surgery and just COVID and babies being born. We've had a lot going on, and we did not get to run in, a running start at some of these projects we had hoped to have done. So we're going to put off paving until spring, just so we're not rushing it and not getting the product we want. The electrical items, so we, we've moved forward with the electrician to put a meter in line of the food truck that's at Vernonia Lake so that we have kind of a third party being the meter that's tracking the electrical pole they're using. So there isn't kind of any discrepancies when we go to bill them for the electrical usage of their food truck. So it's ordered. Once it arrives, the electrician will install it, and then we'll be able to accurately monitor how many kilowatt hours they're pulling for the food truck. But they seem to be doing well down there. They like it, so I think that was a good fix. And that's kind of all I have at this moment. Do you guys have questions for me? Oh, I didn't share. Do you want to share, Dale, the other project? I didn't add your timber thing on there. Something else. Go for it.
You're muted, Dale.
See if my mic will come up. Are you alluding to the, the mill site?
Yeah, I forgot.
Yeah, we're starting to move ahead on putting out for bids on, on getting the trees planted down there. And I, I was going to mention in my counselor report, but did talk to Randy Holtz, got some good information from him on some of the best practices that he's been seeing on his property. He's got a outfit that works for him that does most of his planning and stuff, but anyhow, he's, he's done a lot of schooling on that over the years. And of course, he's managing his little tree farm, so he, he sees the results. He gave me a couple of ideas. I'll be getting with it, Josette. Got some names and numbers, so when we do go out for bids, there'll be some other potential contractors. I know you need three on these small bids, so. I, I was wondering about the Weed Avenue Storm Extension. Have we heard anything back on potential contractor there, or are they still too busy?
Sure. He called me and apologized, but he does not see himself getting to it. He has two in-the-ground projects right now. He pulled back from bidding on that. So we're back to kind of our contractors, you know, and public works crew pulling it off, or going out to other firms. If it's like Five Star is, I think they're all very booked. And so it's probably a better chance that we just do it with our crew and the engineer to kind of double-check what's on the ground, and then the contractor to cover it up and do some compaction and that kind of thing. I really want to get, at minimum, even if our compaction isn't what we want it to be, I want to get that line disconnected before the heavy rainy season because I don't want downtown, any downtown high-water events around homes near the Bear Creek. So even if it's ugly, but we get it to function, and we come back in the spring and do, you know, the right compaction and paving, then I'm good with that. I just want to get it, get it moving.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Any other questions for the city administrator on her report? Okay, thank you, Josette. Items from the mayor and counselors. Any counselors have any items they'd like to discuss tonight? Go ahead, Counselor Webb.
So our community right now is struggling. And I'm not a real speechwriter. I was just some thoughts today while I was working around the house. You know, I would hope this town could start pulling back together. It's really easy to be divisive and and I know I've been one of them. This town this town shines when we pull together and get through the emergencies that we have that face us and we need to start doing that again. Uh, we all need to probably start holding our tongue a little bit, except that there are people that have differences with us. And we don't have to be in their face about it. Um, let's try to support each other. Let's get through this pandemic. Whichever side you're on, on the issues, but we're, we need to work together. And if we don't start doing this, we're going to tear this town in two. I'm, I'm seeing a shift in attitudes. We can go from a noodle, a pool noodle fight in streets, which is great for the kids to be doing, to publicly shaming somebody that just was asking whether or not there's a curfew, which is an appropriate question when they're trying to get some sleep. I mean, let's accommodate everybody on this. Um, so that's my comment for tonight. And I'm going to try to, myself, just try to calm things down. We're going to get through this. So, thanks for the platform.
Thank you, Dale. Any other discussions, uh, Stephanie?
That sounds like the start of an excellent letter to go on the website that we can share onto our social media platform.
I could probably pin it.
Any other counselors have any comments? Well, I'd like to make just one and kind of on a positive note, taking off of what Dale just said, um, Carvin Marvin called me this morning and he's going to start on the carving on Friday, so. Pretty excited about that. He's going to bring his own scaffolding and boom truck and start taking some of the wood he doesn't want off it and so look for that on Friday and moving ahead. That's all I have. We're ready for action. Item summary, Josette.
So I just have that we're moving forward with the resolution, uh, that council had voted on tonight. And then council or staff will be contacting the interested council candidates to verify they're still interested. And then probably at your October 20th meeting, you guys, unless you would like to pick a date, you guys will need to discuss, um, what that is going to look like. Are you re-interviewing? And if you're going to have to be thinking about that, what you want, um, this second round to look like before you pick, uh, a new council member. So if you want to be thinking about it and then we can put it on the agenda as a discussion item for the 20th, um, what that process would look like. We'll put it on the agenda and you guys be thinking.
And then the next workshop on the 13th will be virtual. And the next council meeting on September 20th will be virtual also, so. Make sure you get down to the city hall and get your packets. All the prep work for those two meetings. Go ahead, Stephanie.
If you need them delivered, uh, council, we can also deliver them to your doorstep.
I'll probably have to take you up on that.
I know where to find you.
Okay. Well, thank you for all that attended tonight's meeting and, um, all adjourn this meeting at 7:35. Meeting adjourned. Good night.
Night.